Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And just a kind of quick order of business. You'll notice that Jennifer Eggermeyer is sitting in for Gary Littler tonight. Jennifer, Gary's gone to a week of training. He's, as you know, the interim city clerk. We're hoping after a week of training, he'll want to be the actual city clerk. Jennifer served as the assistant city clerk for over a year. So we brought her in to sit in for Gary this evening. And I'd also like to introduce Lisa Burdette, who's sitting in the front row. Lisa will be becoming the assistant city clerk, or already has been named that, started last Thursday. So with all the three days under her belt, I didn't want to make her sit next to me, just in case she might walk out the door and leave. Made her do that after just three days on the job. We're happy to have her with us this evening and filling in for Jennifer for Gary. We usually recognize any groups who would like to address the council that don't have anything on the agenda. And I know we don't have anybody here, I don't think, that's gonna do that. So I'd like to recognize a group that's here with us this evening. And we've got a resolution, or excuse me, a proclamation for recognizing Demery &amp; Hubbard, real estate agent, for their 100-year anniversary as a business here in Barstown. So I'd like to ask the members of that firm who are with us this evening to come forward. And I'm gonna read this resolution and present it to you. And if you all would, let me introduce yourself to the audience this evening for the record. So my name is Ken Reapier.
I'm Norman Reapier.
Steve Spence.
Gary Boblett.
Mrs. Boblett.
Riri Nicholson.
Betty Hart.
Okay, well, welcome. And this is quite an achievement to any firm that makes it 100 years through multiple ownership and leadership. And everybody's still smiling and getting along. I can relate to that. So we're something happy to have you all here. And it's an honor to recognize a business in this community, and one that's been a great part of the community outside of just selling homes and making people's mistakes for them. So here's the proclamation that we've done on your all's behalf this evening. Whereas Lehman P. Hubbard had just returned for his courageous service in World War I, and whereas Stanley R. Demery and Lehman P. Hubbard, two of Barstown's most popular young men according to the Kentucky Standard, founded the firm Demery &amp; Hubbard. And whereas Stanley R. Demery served two terms as Barstown's mayor, the first in 1930 before resigning to become a land appraiser for the Federal Land Bank, and the second in 1946. And whereas in Norma Raker's humble opinion, because of the wonderful people of Barstown and Nelson County, we've had the opportunity to serve our community for 100 years. And whereas the focus on Demery &amp; Hubbard's centennial is paying tribute to their founders and expressing their gratitude to the people of our community. And whereas since 1919, the team at Demery &amp; Hubbard has known that professional service is our product. And the same being true then as it is today. Now therefore, I, J. Richard Heaton, Mayor of the City of Barstown, do hereby encourage all of Barstown residents to join the celebration of Demery &amp; Hubbard, 100 years of service in Barstown, Kentucky. Congratulations. (Applause). You can say this, Barbara, I'll present that part to you.
What are you saying, I'm the owner?
I did the same vote. Congratulations to all of you. Thanks a million.
Listen, you're in there with glasses, you must have loved it. You're welcome. (Applause).
Okay, and we have another new face to some of you in our group this evening, Dylan Durbin. It's our, I guess, what's the actual title, Assistant City Engineer?
Yeah.
Okay. He's joined us this evening. Jessica's on vacation. So Dylan, if you would, would you walk us through the sidewalk waiver request for DMK Development?
Yes, this is the proposed assisted living facility there at the corner of Lincoln Way and Templeton Avenue. They're requesting a waiver for the sidewalks there along the Templeton Avenue frontage. Right now, currently, the sidewalk stops right there at Chambers Boulevard. And then, you know, right there beside, the state right there at Templeton is pretty rough still for a sidewalk. It'd be a lot of work to actually put a sidewalk in, especially there, sidewalks are gardens, the grades are pretty steep, there's a lot of utilities right there. And also, the state has talked about, been some improvements to Templeton, some widening. And also, there's the potential for the new city school there on their property. And so there's a lot of moving factors there, that's why they're requesting this waiver.
Who's DMK Development?
I think they're out of Lexington. I think they're a nationwide company, but they do a lot of assisted living facilities.
One question I had, and I didn't get a chance to talk this over with Dylan or Jessica, would be, would it be appropriate for us to do the waiver with any conditions, perhaps, that if, if and when Templeton, is it 1430?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 1430 is, you know, reconstructed or rebuilt, that we might revisit the requirement for a sidewalk. Now, a lot of times, if you're lucky, and the state does those projects, they build the sidewalks. But it doesn't always happen, but 245 is a perfect example of that, where they built that road and didn't build any sidewalks with it. So, you know, I just thought of this later this afternoon, that maybe we might put a condition on the waiver that, to make it to be at such time as when the renovation or reconstruction of 1430 would occur, that the city retains the right to enforce the sidewalk requirement. In lieu of the state putting that in on their construction project.
I mean, I think that's reasonable there. I think that's something we've done in the past on some other projects, is that right? Jessica's not here to answer that.
Well, just in light of the fact that where that property's located, there's major residential development in that area, there's school development in that area, another school probably gonna be put across the street, we would want some connectivity, you know, because Templeton has sidewalks to Wellington and to the school, which is a pretty short distance from there. And I just wouldn't want to take on the obligation for the city to have to put them in when you could require them to put them in now.
I think that was part of our long-term plan, was for all this to join.
Yes, that was.
Yes.
And they are required to have the sidewalks internally within that development, so, you know, it just makes sense, I think. I agree with what they're asking for, that it's probably not practical now, but put them in, and then, as we hope, in within five years or something, that the state might do something to approve that. Particularly if the, it might even happen sooner than that, if the bypass in the western corridor gets built, that may have some impact as well on the rebuild of that.
They don't even have them drawn on here, do they? I mean, they're not, yeah.
No, no, no.
Yeah. I'll agree with you, Mayor, I think that's a great idea.
Well, you want to protect the city's interest in that, because sure as you don't put that in there, then we get home with it for, as we have with so many other developments, unfortunately. But I think it would be the best interest of the city if we put that stipulation in, if and when.
So I'd like to put that in a form of a motion unless there's other questions or discussion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion with the request for the sidewalk waiver, request that we also add on to that, that if and when the city needs it necessary, that we need those sidewalks on, and they would put that in their future plans that they've got there. Like I said, I don't think it's in the drawings they got right now, but make that part of their original drawing.
Well, make it a condition of the waiver that if and when 1430 is ever redelved or redesigned, that we could enforce this requirement, install a city, or excuse me, sidewalk, this property owner, in lieu of if the state chooses not to put the sidewalk in, we'd add that to that motion. And the motion by councilman, shekel to the other second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Hart. Any other discussion? All in favor, six and a half saying aye. All opposed, motion is carried. Okay, Dylan, you're still up. If you'd like to walk us through the street resurfacing information this year.
This is the annual street resurfacing bid. The bid is based on a price per ton of asphalt. The actual material in the haul is based on the state price contract, and then the lay price is based on the Mango's pricing. So the total per ton is $85. That's an increase of $4 a ton from last year, which is about what we were anticipating.
If you'll note that there's paths on the streets, and I think all the streets have been playing a resurface this year, and you have to.
Yes.
Can you do that? I'd like to make a note that each cord is only.
So it's about 5.8 miles of street that we're proposing right now, and about 6,350 tons of asphalt. And that subject's changed, and, you know, the state's in our budget there. So we're hoping to apply for some state funding also for a couple of streets there.
It's our goal, the blacktop, 25 to 6 miles.
Yes, yes.
For the state on schedule for research.
It seems like our line item's about 550,000, but last year we did get some funds from the state. I can't remember exactly the name for those funds, but they weren't, they were sort of like contingency funds that were available. I think we got some, and maybe Lebanon got some here in this area. So.
Mayor, are these listed in priority, or just randomly on the table here?
I think they're now a bit of order.
I don't think it's priority.
The streets, no, they're not listed in priority.
Sometimes, correct?
You know, Mango typically, you know, will come in sometimes on some Fridays, and they finish up some work early, depending on how much time they got, like depending on which street they get. So at the end of the fall, typically, they'll do more, you know, spending several days at a time. As you notice, so far this year, they've come in and hit a few streets on one day here and there. And I would ask for a motion then, that we approve the bid for the asphalt tonnage of lane, what's it, $85 per ton?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Councilwoman Williams, do have a second.
I'll second.
Second, by Councilwoman Buckman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Okay. Audrey, I guess we're calling you, if you don't mind, to read the summary of the HRB recommendations, and then, I think Councilwoman Hart may accuse on CLA 19-129, but we can read the summaries. Take all those prior to that. Is that correct? Councilwoman Hart?
Yes. CLA 19-124, David Dana Dones, applicant owners, request a conditional use permit to operate as a microbrewery at 112 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval for the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Conditions, the CUP would be approved with all the conditions set forth by planning and zoning. CLA 19-71 amended, Mike and Amy Deaton, applicant owners, request to build an addition, course is amended, at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval of the amended changes to proposed addition. CLA 19-103, Joan Harden, applicant owner, request to install a handrail at 111 North Fifth Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed handrail. CLA 19-125, Dr. Harry Spalding, applicant owner, request to paint the west/south exterior horizontal siding gutters and drain spouts at 310 South Fifth Street. Recommendation, approval of both paint colors with the following conditions. Conditions, both paint colors were approved, provided the applicant would choose the final color that was most appropriate, and that color would be sent to Rashay Jennings for documentation in her records. CLA 19-126, Harold Waters, applicant owner, request to install a new roof at 113 South Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed roof with the following conditions. The applicant will provide the matte black and traditional black samples, and the one that is most appropriate will be selected and approved by the preservation coordinator. CLA 19-127, Margaret Sue Masters, applicant owner, request to paint at 114 South Fourth Street. Recommendation, approval to paint the house the proposed colors. CLA 19-128, Margaret Sue Masters, applicant owner, request to paint at 530 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to paint the structure the proposed paint colors. CLA 19-129, Bourbon Capital Community Alliance, applicant, request to install signage at various downtown addresses. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed signage with the following conditions. Conditions, one window sign is approved, and any more window signs added to the storefronts would have to be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator. And the remaining COAs, the CLA 19-130 was tabled due to lack of attendance, and the remaining COAs were tabled until the site plan was approved by planning and zoning.
Okay, and we'll take up the A through G, and we'll let Councilwoman Hart recuse herself on CLA 19-128, which is letter H, or letter H. So if I could, I'd like to get a motion then, to approve the COAs 19-124, 19-71, 19-103, 19-125, 126, 127, and 128, as presented and read.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Councilwoman Hibbs, do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, six and a half saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Betty, you want to continue?
I just need to abstain. I think it's staying silent, the city attorney, tell me.
Okay, then I need a motion then, to approve CLA 19-149, which is related to the Bourbon Capital Community Alliance.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Buckman.
Second.
Councilwoman Williams, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, six and a half saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion's carried. The record showed that Councilwoman Hart said, thank you. Okay. And if everyone's had a chance to review our minutes from our July 9th meeting, we approve that by unanimous consent, unless there's any additions or corrections. We'll move on then. All right, this is the first reading, B 2019-10. I need a council person to present this, and we would like to get some input from the home as to the basis of this new ordinance.
Have you talked about this before, this was going about?
Yes.
I mean, all the specifics here, but some rates went up and some came down, or some specifics came down, so, you might explain it better.
Somebody introduce it.
Mayor, common order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2019-10, and that should be read full.
Do you want me to read it first, Mayor, or you want to have me?
Yeah, I guess so.
Sorry.
Sorry for you.
I'm sorry for you, too. Ordinance number B 2019-10, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance style, an ordinance relating to the operation of a municipal-owned cable television communication system to provide service to residents and customers within the city of Barstown and Nelson County, Kentucky. Authorizing the expenditure of money from the 1984 bond sale and from the general fund to purchase the system and the creation of a department which shall be called the Barstown Cable TV Department. The City of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain that section 54.04 subsection D 1 and 2, 54.04 subsection F 1 and 2, and 54.04 subsection I 1 and 2 be amended as follows. Section 54.04, installation and reconnection charges, subscriber rates, and miscellaneous service charges. D, all subscribers except for multi-use subscribers and educational/charitable/institutional subscribers shall pay the following charges for the services as listed. One, basic CATV service, programming charge striking $8.24 a month inserting $15.76 per month, plus, A, within corporate limits, $7 per month, B, outside corporate limits, striking $11.75, inserting $7.95 per month. This is the minimum CATV programming service level and may include local and distant broadcast signals, public, educational, and governmental channels, home shopping networks, and local origination channels. Effective September 1st, striking 2017, inserting 2019. The retail rate for basic under this section 54.04 subsection D 1 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to September 1st, striking 2017, inserting 2019. Two, expanded CATV service, parentheses, requires basic service subscription, close parentheses, expanded basic CATV service, striking $42.11, inserting $52.22 per month additional. This is the first highest penetrated tier of service above basic CATV service, currently channels 20 through, striking 77, inserting 82. Effective, striking February 1st, 2016, inserting September 1st, 2019. The retail rate for expanded basic under this section 54.04 D 2 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to, striking February 1st, 2016, inserting September 1st, 2019. Home box office, HBO and HBO Plus, striking $18.07, inserting $15 per month extra. Cinemax, parentheses, Max, $8, striking $8.09, inserting $7.87 per month additional. Showtime Combo, striking $12.34 per month, inserting $13.25 per month additional. HBO, HBO Plus, Max, striking $24.87 per month, inserting $22.87 per month additional. HBO, HBO Plus, Showtime Combo, striking $30.41, inserting $36.88 per month additional. Max Showtime Combo, $20, striking $20.43, inserting $21.88 per month additional. Digital Gateway Service, $2.95 per month additional. High Def Digital Gateway Service, $2.95 per month additional. High Def slash DVR Digital Gateway Service, $7.95 per month additional. Cable Card Service, $2 per month additional. Economy Tier, striking $27.45 per month, inserting $32.56 per month additional. Digital Basic, striking $8.39 per month, inserting $7.54 per month additional. Economy Digital Basic, striking $5.78 per month, inserting $5.54 per month additional. Extended Digital Basic, striking $2.21 per month, inserting $1.73 per month additional. Economy Extended Digital Basic, striking $1.53 per month, inserting $1.36 per month additional. Stars slash Encore Super Pack, striking $9.96 per month, inserting $10.06 per month additional. Pay-Per-View, parentheses, PBB, supplier suggested retail price. Premium Silver Pay Package, striking $37.21 per month, inserting $36.13 per month additional. Premium Gold Pay Package, striking $47.17 per month, inserting $46.19 per month additional. Commercial Fox Sports Surcharge, $2 per month additional. High Definition Tier, striking $2.34, inserting $2.48 per month additional. Latin Tier, $5 per month additional. TV Japan, $15 per month additional. Multi-Room DVR, $1 per month additional per household. Effective, striking February 1st, 2016, inserting September 1st, 2019, the retail rate for the following packages, Digital Basic, Extended Digital Basic, High Definition Tier, and HBO, Cinemax, Showtime Combo, Stars slash Encore, and all combinations thereof under this section 54.04 D 2 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to, striking February 1st, 2016, inserting September 1st, 2019. S, multiple use subscribers and educational/charitable/institutional subscribers shall pay the following charges for the services as listed. Number one, multiple use, parentheses, bulk subscribers shall pay for the following charges, pay the following charges for services as listed. A, basic CATV service, programming charge striking $8.24, inserting $15.76 per month, plus, A, within corporate limits, $7 per month, B, outside corporate limits, striking $11.75, inserting $7.95 per month, plus $1 per month per additional outlet required on all outlets. This is the minimum CATV programming service level and may include local and distant broadcast signals, public, educational, and governmental channels, home shopping networks, and local origination channels. Effective September 1st, striking 2017, insert 2019, the retail rate for basic CATV service under this section 54.04 F 1 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to September 1st, striking 2017, insert 2019. B, extended basic CATV service, parentheses, requires basic service subscription. Expanded basic CATV service, striking $42.11, insert $52.22 per month additional, plus 75 cents per month per additional outlet required on all outlets. HBO and HBO Plus, striking $18.07, inserting $15 per month additional, plus $3.31 per month per additional outlet required on all outlets. Effective, striking February 1st, 2016, inserting September 1st, 2019, the retail rate for extended, expanded basic and HBO under this section 54.04 F 1 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to, striking February 1st, 2016, inserting September 1st, 2019. Two, educational, charitable, institutional subscribers shall pay the following charges for services as listed. A, basic CATV service, programming charge, striking $8.24, inserting $15.76 per month, plus, A, within corporate limits, $7 per month, B, outside corporate limits, striking $11.75, inserting $7.95 per month. This is the minimum CATV programming service level and may include local and distant broadcast channels, public, educational, and governmental channels, home shopping networks, and local origination channels. Effective September 1st, strike 2017, insert 2019, the retail rate for basic CATV service under this section 54.04 F 2 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to September 1st, strike 2017, insert 2019. I'm gonna get a drink quickly. B, expanded basic CATV service, parentheses, requires basic service subscription. Expanded basic CATV service, striking $42.11, inserting $52.22 per month additional, plus 75 cents per month per additional outlet required on all outlets. Effective, strike February 1st, 2016, insert September 1st, 2019, the retail rate for expanded basic services under this section 54.04 F 2 shall further be modified to reflect any increases or decreases in the applicable wholesale programming costs that occur subsequent to, strike February 1st, 2016, insert September 1st, 2019. I, cable modem internet service. Number one, residential service, striking 10 millabytes per second, is that right in a home? $31.25 per month, striking 25 millabytes per second, $36.25 per month, striking 50 millabytes per second, 46.25 per month, striking 100 millabytes per second, $56.25 per month. Inserting, A, within corporate limits, 20 millabytes per second, $31.25 per month, 50 millabytes per second, $36.25 per month, 100 millabytes per second, $46.25 per month, 200 millabytes per second, $56.25 per month. B, outside corporate limits, 20 millabytes per second, $36 per month, 50 millabytes per second. per second, $41. per month, 100 millibites per second, $51. per month, 200 millibites per second, $61. per month. Customers may rent a modem from the city at a cost of $3. per month, or may provide their own modem, meeting city specifications, inserting customers may also rent a gigabit wireless router or wireless mesh extender from the city at a cost of $5. each per month. Number two, commercial service costs depend on the number of users and the bandwidth, parentheses speed requested. Commercial customers may rent the modem at a cost of $3. per month, or may provide their own modem, meeting city specifications. The monthly rates for commercial services are, striking up to five users at 50 millibites per second, $56.25 per month, striking up to 25 users at 80 millibites per second, $76.25 per month, striking up to 25 users at 100 millibites per second, $116.25 per month, striking over 25 users and/or over 100 millibites per second by contract, inserting (a) within corporate limits, up to five users at 100 millibites per second, $56.25 per month, up to 25 users at 200 millibites per second, $76.25 per month, up to 25 users at 250 millibites per second, $116.25 per month, over 25 users and/or over 250 millibites per second, parentheses by contract. Inserting section B, outside corporate limits, up to five users at 100 millibites per second, $61. per month, up to 25 users at 200 millibites per second, $81. per month, up to 25 users at 250 millibites per second, $121. per month, over 25 users and/or over 250 millibites per second, parentheses by contract. This ordinance including the rates and changes, charges shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law and put into effect and collected from and after the closing business, strike January 31st, 2016, insert August 30th, 2019, i.e. for bills due on or after, strike February 1st, 2016, insert September 1st, 2019. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict.
The challenge for the home is to explain all that's the less time than it took. Because you can see there's a lot moving parts. You've got some rates have been going down, some are going up, and steam is going up for the same price for certain customers, and so there's a lot here to digest, but I think we need an explanation before we read again, just to do a second reading of the vote.
I'll try not to make a habit of this. So basically what we're trying to do is address some of the changes and edits. This original ordinance was from 2016, so a lot of the changes actually are just bringing our ordinance current because of the automatic renewal authority in our ordinance that allows us to adjust those rates based on our programming cost. So some of the highlights or most, the important changes or the significant ones are basically addition of the ACC Network like we talked about last time. That is, and CTC has finished their negotiations and have actually finalized their rates. That's about 60 cents additional, and so that's gonna, as soon as the proposal is accepted, we can launch the paperwork to get that channel started. So that's kind of broke down that first piece there. The 1576 in programming is the new rate, which is, currently was 1565, that's about 11 cents, and then the expanded basic, which was currently 5173, goes up about 49 cents to 5222, a total of about 60 cents at that channel. So that's the major change. The other items in here are the change in the outside corporate limit rate. We're shifting, as we have in the past, some of the, our expenses in serving out in the county because of how, because of the density. We've always had a great differential in the city versus the county in the cable TV who've never had it on the internet. Now where it matters now, that shift would put a lot of effect on the customers that have both services. So you see, you see it in that rate that has gone down from 1175 to 795 to adjust for that shift. Another thing that we've proposed in here is doubling speeds. We've had requests every so often that our customers' needs for speed increases, how they want to be more efficient, be able to connect faster, get their downloads faster. We usually accommodate them, and so we've included a proposal to basically double their speeds for the same price they would pay them. One other change is proposed here is the ability to offer a wireless gateway. We, in the past, have always delivered the internet, basically an ethernet, a wired interface, and that's been sufficient, but things have changed, how people experience their internet and use their internet is wireless, and so we kind of stopped short of delivering that all the way to how they use it. And so we've included, we proposed a wireless gateway, that's at least a gigabit. That's another problem we run into is customers having older routers, can't keep up the speeds that we provide, and so I think that would eliminate a lot of calls and issues that stem from having, you know, very old routers. So those are the things that I think will improve our services, and we try to incorporate edits and catch everything up all together.
Good, some curious questions, and I'm sure you made the comparisons. How are these new rate changes going to some of our competition like Dish and Direct and some of the other? We're still...
You were still correct, but we're competitive with the doubling of speeds, that's a good question. We're at a position without considering promotions and things like that that, you know, that last, you know, short time, we're creating better rates.
Any other questions for the home? This is just a press reading of the Secretary on this next meeting. Thank you, home. We have a second reading now of ordinance B 2019-08. That's the one that you will never be discussed, changing the times of our meetings, effective August 1st. I could ask one of the council members to introduce it. Audrey, you have to read that.
Listen to short, I have to read that one again, though, it's time.
Mayor Fumba, do you'd like to introduce ordinance Number B 2019-08, an ordinance amending, ordinance Number B 2017-01, changing the times of the regular meetings of the City Council.
Okay, thank you, Audrey.
Ordinance Number B 2019-08, an ordinance amending, ordinance Number B 2017-01, changing the times of the regular meetings of the City Council. Whereas the current regular meetings of the Barstown City Council are held on the first Tuesday of each month at 5:00 p.m. and the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers on the campus of City Hall in Barstown, Kentucky. And whereas, following a discussion at the July 2nd, 2019 working session, there was the consensus of Mayor J. Richard Heaton and members of the City Council to amend the time of all regular meetings to 6:00 p.m. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Barstown that the regular meetings of said City Council are to be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month in the council chambers on the campus of City Hall in Barstown, Kentucky at strike 7:00 p.m., insert 6:00 p.m. And on the first Tuesday of each month in the council chambers on the campus of City Hall in Barstown, Kentucky at strike 5:00 p.m., insert 6:00 p.m. All ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. I could, I'd like to ask then for a motion to approve the amendments to ordinance B 2017-01, changing the times of the regular meetings of the City Council. Motion by Councilman Williams.
I'll say that one.
Councilman Buckman, is there any other discussion? So, these would go into effect next month, so you've got to be posted at 6:00. Don't be tardy. There we are. I'm just, that's my discussion. Okay, any other discussion? All the favorists, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, starting with Bill.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. And the next one is a second reading, B 2019-09, some changes to our pay classification plan. Got to get that in, read the summary, Greg. If you don't mind, I'll let you off.
We're gonna have to hear from you on those resolutions in the next one. Thank you.
Summary ordinance B 2019-01, classification and compensation plan, and ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled, and ordinance creating classification plan and compensation plan. This ordinance amends Chapter 35 Employment Consultations, the Classification Plan and Compensation Plan of Municipal Code by, amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade, and setting the ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and subsequent years. The amendments and additions reflecting the number of positions titled and paid grade respectively are: Administration, number of positions, one, ordinance enforcement officer, strike part-time, grade 105. Police, strike 18, add 20, police officers, grade 109, Parks and Recreation, add 1, add program facilitator, and grade 1 for fire, strike 9 at 11, firefighter EMT, grade 107. Strike 10, strike firefighter part-time, strike 106. Cable internet, one position exempt. Strike systems engineer, add chief information officer, grade 123. All ordinance, parts of ordinance in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Is that summary certified, Greg?
Is that summary certified, Greg? Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Greg. As I said, we discussed this at the last meeting. This is just kind of ordained what we did with our budget with some of the positions. We have a motion then to approve ordinance B 2019-09. Councilman Sheckels, you have a second?
Second.
Councilman, this is the second reading, so I'll ask all those in favor, if anybody is saying aye, starting with Councilman Hicks.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess we have any reports from the staff or committees or anything, I know we're gonna touch on something after we finish with this. The seat agreement, we'll talk about that, Eric, when you get done with that. Let's see, Audrey, then do you want to discuss, we have to do a resolution, we've already voted to...
Do you mean to explain a little bit about it?
Yeah.
Okay. So sometime early on, probably one of the first meetings, maybe in December, I think it was, we had had a discussion about this property that's there at the corner of Old Bluefield Pike, and that it wasn't being used, and so at that time, the City Council designated it as surplus property, so that enabled Larry Hamilton and Jessica to go ahead and get a plat prepared, which you see is proposed, the proposed plat is attached here. We've gone about changing the zoning, it was zoned, I don't remember exactly, it was zoned residential, it's now zoned commercial, with the restriction that a building cannot be put on it. It's currently being used as a parking lot in essence, so that is all it could really be used for. It's a very small tract of land, so you couldn't really build on it anyway. So Larry and I took care of getting all those papers for planning and zoning to approve that, and it's been appraised. So it's ready to be sold, we're ready to put out an advertisement for bids on the property, so this is just the last step to sort of formalize that we've designated as such, we're identifying why we no longer need it, why we obtained it, and how we're going to dispose of it, and that the funds will be put into the general fund, which is all required by statute. I can answer any questions, hopefully, maybe. Anybody has any?
Yeah, and we will put the bid out, there will be a minimum required of the bids when they're completely advertised or sealed bids, based on the appraisals. So...
Can I ask a question? So Track 2, is that down in the gully, or where is that?
I think that was the track that fronted the creek where it was protected property, so Track 1 is just this very small section. Yeah, it goes over into the creek and all that.
Okay, so Track 2 doesn't have any value?
But I believe that that was part of that agreement that Jane had told us about.
Yeah, Track 1 is the only thing I think we're selling, I think, but Track 2 is part of that easement.
Track 2 is part of that, is part of like an easement, it's protected part of the watershed or something to that effect, I'm calling it the wrong thing, but there was a reason...
Part 2 was when we got that grant from the state.
That's what it is, yeah.
That connected that area behind the Cobake Building all the way up to the reservoir.
It's called Town Creek Road.
It was part of the stipulation that it all be connected right there as part of that grant proposal, we did.
So we can't sell that track?
That happened 2012, 1112.
But in essence, what has been drawn off as Track 1 is basically what is currently a gravel parking lot right now.
It's got a lot of utilities with some, so...
Which is why there's the restriction, yeah.
Okay, and there's no more discussion, we have to get a motion then to approve this resolution, 2019-02, as it pertains to surplus property on Old Bluefield Pike.
Some move?
Motion, I think, a little bit hard, you have a second?
One second.
Second, the Councilman Buckman. The all the favorists, if anybody is saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Next, we have another resolution that's kind of a requirement for this KIA loan. Audrey, if you can speak to that, because it appears that these 1, 2, and 3 are just matter of record.
They are, yes, so...
Something that need to be read. They want it to be read, but just read the resolution.
So this one is something where we've already done all, I mean Jessica, I don't know if you can speak to this at all, this is all Jessica's project. So there, I know I had to provide an opinion about this project and all these different things, and so this is basically something that they are requiring us to execute, basically authorizing us to enter into this agreement, and that you and the city clerk can sign the agreements on behalf of the city to finalize obtaining these $5.4 million in loan funds that I know we had discussed some time back. So this is the last step to formalize that agreement and authorize the mayor to enter into that agreement on behalf of the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority.
And you'll note that these other items that are in your pack, that there's a letter from the attorney's office that specifies these documents that we must supply and execute on in order to enter into the loan agreement through the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for that $5.4 million, I think, of the $7 million project, which is a Robert Creek sewer line upgrade, and also a pump station down in Potashaw. So I guess, Audrey, you want to read the resolution then?
Sure. Resolution 2019-03, a resolution approving and authorizing an assistance agreement between the City of Barstown, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to provide up to $5.4 million of loan funds for wastewater system improvements. Whereas the City Council, parentheses governing authority of the City of Barstown, Kentucky, parentheses government agency, has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the governmental agency's wastewater system, parentheses the project, and whereas the governmental agency has made application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, parentheses the authority, for the purpose of providing monies to construct the project, and whereas in order to obtain such money, the governmental agency is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore it is resolved by the City of Barstown, Kentucky as follows: Section 1, the governing authority hereby approves and... Section one, the governing authority hereby approves and authorizes the assistance agreement between the governmental agency and the authority dated as of, and I don't think it's been signed yet, mayor, while there's a blank there, twenty nineteen, substantially in the form on file with the governmental agency for the purpose of providing necessary financing to the governmental agency for the project. Section two, that the mayor and city clerk of the governmental agency be and hereby are authorized, directed, and empowered to execute necessary documents or agreements, and to otherwise act on behalf of the governmental agency to effect such financing. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Then I would ask, uh, for a motion then that we approve this resolution, twenty nineteen dash zero three, as required for the, uh, for the loan documents to enter into this loan agreement with Kentucky Infrastructure Authority.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Williams, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, the Councilman Shekels, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, six o'clock, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Got a lot of this resolution stuff tonight.
Hopefully Eric can explain this a little bit better than I can.
Okay, uh, we've got, Eric, if you would like to, Eric Richter is our electrical engineer, is gonna explain the, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash zero four, related to our KU SEPA agreement.
Uh, so currently the, our SEPA entitlements are being sold on the open market by KOEMEA. That was, uh, several months ago. That was authorization from mayor to sign that. Uh, after some discussion and a lot of tutelage by Larry Hamilton, uh, he's been working with Kentucky Utilities, who's our wholesale provider, and the goal is that instead of our allocation being sold on the market, they can actually, uh, bring it into their grid on our behalf. Uh, so the goal would then be it can offset some of our costs, so we would actually be utilizing some of that power off the grid for the first time, as opposed to selling it, which we've done for the past, I believe, fifty or so years. Uh, so this is just an agreement for KU to then, there's still some, um, they have to go before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, uh, to get that approval. There's still some workings on, but this is kind of our step. Let's move in that direction where we can begin utilizing that, uh, for ourselves off the KU grid, uh, which should help offset some of our costs.
I think Larry did explain to me, Larry knows everything about this, maybe, I don't know, that it was gonna be a substantial financial benefit to us to do it this way. Isn't that right?
Right, we're, the, um, currently we have our, our cost with the Department of Energy that maintains the, the SEPA hydroelectric plants, um, and the goal is that, you know, that what, what we're currently, what KOEMEA is currently selling on the market, uh, is the best that they can get, but by offsetting the cost, it will reduce our demand cost with KU, uh, which significantly reduce it, you know, I forget the exact numbers, but it'll, the goal is that it'll be more of an offset of our KU bill, uh, than what KOEMEA is selling it on the market, uh, which should, uh, so our, our KU demand bill would decrease about more than what we're selling it for.
Any, any questions of Eric? You know, just in general, you know, we've had a long relationship with KU, and, um, this is not really related to this, but, you know, it's, it's related to our relationship and what it's done for our ratepayers and just, you know, uh, we decided to stay with KU and LG&E, ourselves and Nicholasville, I believe it is, uh, or so, and some of the other members of the Kentucky Municipal Electrical Association, many of them were being courted by other providers, and we stayed our course. And if you recall back in June, everybody looked at their electric bill and said, what's wrong? It's too cheap, you know? Because, uh, because we were with, stayed with KU, uh, we, you know, we were able to pass almost six hundred thousand dollar credit to the users, based on their amount of usage. And we're gonna be, uh, also looking at a rate reduction that Eric has talked to you all about. So I think that was, you know, very intuitive, I think, on Larry's behalf, and Jeff Miller's been with, with us a long time, and having them, uh, work with Eric on this, his pays dividends, and we feel comfortable, we'd rather have our SEPA being handled by KU and, uh, their team as opposed to, uh, farming it up some of the people, so we feel very strongly about this recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's see, they both have approved, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash zero four, and need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, mayor.
Motion by Councilman Hibs, second.
Second.
Second, the Councilman Buckman. All in favor, six o'clock, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Motion is carried. Eric, would you just, uh, rather than an announcement, would you just kind of share briefly about our discussion about, uh, putting lighting on our welcome signs, uh, coming into Barstown? We have three of those that we've, uh, looked at. You should talk a little bit about that.
Uh, Councilwoman Hart emailed me over the weekend asking about if it had been something that was considered, and it was not something that I was a part of, but in kind of asking around, uh, Jeff Miller, the electrical superintendent, said it had been looked at in the past. When I emailed Salt River, uh, Nick Higginson said it had been discussed multiple times in the past. Uh, we have the, the three welcome signs, there's a one on New Haven Road, uh, one on Louisville Road, and one at the intersection of Templin and two forty-five. Uh, so the goal is to put a floodlight, to light those up in the evenings. Uh, I've done some calculations and looking about a seven thousand dollar cost for the project for all three. Uh, that includes some, uh, upfront costs for excavation conduit, uh, it was gonna be a little more expensive, but we're working with Salt River today, uh, and they said we can get just a normal, uh, service, uh, you know, we deal a little cost and, and they can hook it up. Uh, we looked at possibly serving it with solar, uh, and putting some panels out there, but, uh, the cost of those panels is just as much cost as the upfront cost on the excavation, and that might be a little more stable. Uh, so there's information also, we're, uh, just now starting the process this week, uh, so, you know, as we get doing that project, we'll give you all an update, but it was something that Councilwoman Hart brought up, and just want to let you all know that project was going on.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for it, but having not missed a backstory to this, that they had been working on in the past, and currently they've gotten here tonight to discuss it, no matter, two days, or we, we reached out to them, Jeff Miller, he goes, oh yeah, I've been, I've talked to them about this and this, they already knew where they might have to bore, and where this wire was gonna be, where it would be fed from and so forth, so, uh, I think it was a good recommendation. I, I just had not been made aware of the, the discussion until, uh, we talked about it this week, so we'll give you, uh, we could, we can make it work within our budget, so it doesn't require council approval, we just wanted to go to a more informational standpoint.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Can we, uh, dawn a dusk light or something like that?
Right, it'd be, uh, we can put a controller on it, so it'll come on at six P M. or eight P M. or, or, you know, put a sensor on it, so that, uh, one of the, similar to our street lights, uh, where then, you know, with the enough lighting goes down, uh, it'll kick on, it'll be a, a bright floodlight, that'll be, it's a seven foot tall by almost an eighth foot wide, signs will be nice, bright floodlight, uh, so for all three elevations, and we talked about maybe adding the Wilson Industrial Park as a possible fourth location, there, according to Jeff Miller, he said there, there used to be lighting out there also, uh, but over the years it failed, so we might add that one as well, uh, so that there's a, for tourism, just lighting up the town to do that location also. But yes, we'd have to store it on.
Any other questions for Eric?
Thank you for that, so quickly.
Larry Hamilton would be real happy if we, uh, put this bid, like, he's done a ton of work on this SEPA, it's very complicated stuff, but I think at the end of the day, we're gonna see some credits, and, uh, because we're working with a really solid group there at KU. Okay, um, down to, uh, we have a Board of Adjustments opening, um, I think it was Mr. Reed that was on the Board of Adjustments, and his work schedule is now for him, he has to be out of town a lot, and prevent him from being able to attend, so he resigned his position, and, uh, as you see here, I, uh, nominated Fred Hagen to be appointed. As you all know, Fred served on the council for a number of years. Fred previously also served on Plating and Zoning Commission, so he's got, uh, excellent background to serve in this position, and Fred's been retired now, and I think the, the house is going in his way now, not, uh, going the other way on him and taking up all his time, so he's, he said he's looking for something to get involved with in the community, so I would like to, uh, ask for your all's approval to appoint Fred Hagen, uh, to the Board of Adjustments.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Fred Hagen be appointed as the Board of Adjustments. Appointing of the city.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second, mayor.
Second by Councilman Williams. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, six o'clock, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Uh, the next one is, we need to, we have a, uh, citizen appointee who serves on our cemetery committee, as you all know, Evelyn Oakley had served in that role for many, many, many years after she, uh, left the council, and, uh, with her passing, that position was opened, and, um, Mike Boone, who's the husband of Joanne L. Boone, longtime city employee, Mike Boone, retired state police officer, now working with the sheriff's office, uh, is, uh, very interested in the cemetery, and, uh, we asked if he'd be willing to serve. He was delighted that we asked him, so I think he'll be a great appointee to take over the, the opening that, uh, Ms. Oakley's passing has created, so I would ask for a motion to approve Mike Boone to serve as a citizen appointee of our cemetery committee.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mike Boone for the cemetery committee appointment.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second, the Councilman Buckman. Uh, all in favor, six o'clock, saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. All right, um, anybody from the council have anything to bring before, the members of the council, bring before the council or the audience this evening? Check Williams-Butterbell holds the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Okay. Fine, um, nothing else, then we have a cemetery need?
Oh, mayor, if I could.
Sure.
Uh, Chief, can I use you? Any comments?
Uh, Guthrie, Gethry, Councilman Williams brought up an issue that some of his constituents was having over at Guthrie and Honeysuckle. Um, they had an issue with the, uh, if you've been through that intersection, the roadway kind of splits into two lanes when you're coming up Honeysuckle to Guthrie, and it's kind of confusing, so some of the, what was happening when the residents was coming up, the, the, the driving lane really goes into two lanes, and so the stop sign is actually placed in the median on the left, and so what was happening, when people were gonna go to turn right onto Guthrie, um, I think people were kind of getting confused as to whether that stop sign that was on the left that was in the median, it applied to them, and so some of the constituents that were calling Councilman Williams, uh, were confused of whether or not they were supposed to stop and yield because the stop sign was placed on the left. Uh, so what we did was, we got a hold of Ben Bird, and we just had a, a stop sign placed on the right also, so there is no confusion, because now there's a stop sign on the left and there's a stop sign on the right. So when you come up Honeysuckle, there is very clear, there's gonna be a stop sign in both as the lane split, uh, split into two, so when you go through there, you'll see that, so it's, uh, we watched the traffic flow after both, uh, at the, the additional stop sign was placed there, um, it was definitely, you could see that confusion there, uh, so after the traffic flow, uh, we watched that, uh, that pattern, and, uh, there's no confusion there, uh, everyone's stopping, uh, accordingly, and, uh, traffic's going good, so, uh, thanks for bringing that to our attention, uh, Councilman Williams, and it seems to be working.
No more California stops on Honeysuckle.
They're coming to a, a good three second stop, and it's going great. Appreciate that.
Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna announce, mayor, since you didn't make a proclamation of Conway Eagle's one hundred years of service to the community.
Well, I didn't ask for that, I was gonna just say that, uh, there is an automobile dealership up on Third Street, celebrating their hundred year anniversary this week, and I would just like to say that they would like to invite everybody to come and celebrate with them, you know, we've got, uh, there's gonna be a car cruise, there's gonna be barbecue and ice cream and, uh, water, uh, and, uh, no, no other beverages, but a lot of water. And, uh, there'll be, so we, we just wanna, they wanna thank the public for all the support over the hundred years, so we would like to invite you all to come out and enjoy the, come out and get something to eat, we got a car cruise, uh, you never know about that, we had this planned around, Ford Motor Company's got some executives flying in and, uh, to present a plaque, and, uh, it just so happened that, I think there's about four other car cruises, uh, this weekend, so we don't know how many we'll get, we'll probably get some. I think Whiskey City Cruises, there's gotta be three places on Saturday, so that just tells you how busy they are, so, uh, thank you for bringing that up. Look, Shekels, you better be there, you worked there almost as long as I have, so...
If you think a hundred years and a third of that time was there, because you were a little bit over forty percent of the time, that's the best.
Thank you. And, uh, I was gonna wait to, I was gonna wait to announce you, but since she's been fixing problems, uh, this week, uh, as you all know, um, you know, we got the call a week ago, Friday, that, uh, at three thirty, that people from the state called us and said, you know, they've been given an emergency closure requirement, uh, for the bridge out on Parkway, and, uh, this was at three thirty on a Friday, and the closure was gonna happen within less than twenty-four hours, and that's really all they could tell us, because they said they, they, this was very unusual, that the contractors and Paul Sanders from District Four, none of them can remember ever having to close a bridge in less than twenty-four hours, uh, so as you all know, uh, that the crossovers weren't built, there was basically nothing there from any previous crossovers that they could use, you know, sometimes they get lucky on these, uh, blacktop jobs, you know, there's crossovers left over from the previous time, and they just kind of fluff them up and, and get them back in service, but this time they had to haul a lot of tonnage in to build up the road and so forth, and, uh, so I called chief immediately that afternoon, uh, and Greg Ashworth and other staff at the city, we got, you know, they didn't give us anything, they, they said, well, we'll try to get with you Monday if we can, and we issued a, uh, press release as fast as we could, appreciate you all getting that up online as fast as you all did, um, to credit to chief and Joe Seeley and Kevin Thompson, uh, you know, they were already in conversation with the sheriff's department on that Friday afternoon, and, uh, they were working on their plans, and, uh, Saturday, uh, Dean Watts, Senator Higginson, myself, Representative McCoy, and Paul Sanders from District Four were on the phone off and on, negotiating with Frankford, it was kind of itching to have E-Town and us trying to negotiate with Frankford, you know, on trying to soften the blow to us, so we were making suggestions on how they could, uh, divert the traffic, and we won some of the arguments, we lost some of the arguments, but, uh, Monday morning, Judge Watts and I met with, uh, Paul Sanders at the courthouse, and the police people, police people were already in place, you know, seven A M., they were already in place to start working on the patrol, the traffic control, and, you know, it was, you know, kind of a fluid situation, because, you know, we had not had something like this happen, where I think they said the average traffic per day was somewhere between five and six thousand cars, that were getting routed on to, uh, Stephen Foster slash Highway one fifty and sixty-two, uh, so, uh, in the hottest week of the month, fair week, and, uh, I just gotta say, chief, you and your team did a heck of a job, and, uh, and also I've talked to Sheriff Penarona, thanked him and, uh, Paul Sanders, because that Monday morning, Paul said, the best case scenario, we might get this open by Friday. I mean, they had installed guardrails and built this crossover, I mean, it was a major, major issue, and I think you sent me the green light at four twenty-seven on Thursday, that Parkway was open again, so, uh, it really went pretty well considering how short notice we got, and, uh, I think you're all's experience with, uh, dealing with calamities like this, all's experience with dealing with calamities like this paid off, and it wasn't, I know it was bad to some people to sit through some of the lights and all that, but we're kind of spoiled here, you know, you got lights and they stay red for 15 seconds, and if you have to go through two of them, man, you've just really been inconvenience, you know? So I just wanted to say publicly how proud I am of what you all did, and it was great to see, you know, state government, local government, and then the contractors, John Hagen, the bridge company from over Springfield and Mado, did that work in those four. They were, they started work on Sunday, that shows you how they really teamed up to get moving on that, make the impact less than it could have been on us. Don't know how long it's going to take to fix a bridge, but the traffic's been moving out, and so it's a whole lot, a whole lot better, so appreciate that. Let's see. Did I already do the cemetery D, or y'all cut me off?
Yeah.
Okay, we have, any other comments from council members, representatives?
I've got an announcement.
Sure.
This is not as exciting as 100 years, but I want to thank everybody in the room for helping me celebrate my 40th wedding anniversary today. I took it upstage about Roland a couple of months ago when he did the same thing, so. It's what we had to do for the KU.
Well, we're keeping it a little bit late here. We're going to get COVID. Congratulations. Okay, we have one cemetery D for Keith Crowe, so we'll do that by unanimous consent, so I'm kind of few of all. And if there's not any more announcements, I'd ask for a motion for a adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Buckman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Williams, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you all.